So, 6 o'clock. I'd like to get us in and out, back to our houses. And hopefully it won't be raining as bad when we do. So, just for everybody's notice, we are being videotaped this evening. But I'll call this session of the Plington School Committee we need to order for September 18th. I'd like to acknowledge Colleen Mead and Julie Lynch from our staff here. Nice to see you both here.
Nice to see you guys.
Did you have anything you would like to share with the committee this evening? Appreciate all your efforts in getting the school year off to a great start. So, thank you for that very much. And seeing no other visitors from the audience, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting on July 14th, 2023. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right. Onto school committee correspondence. So, over the summer, I was approached by a member of the gardening club here in town, who's also one of the neighbors of the Dennett Elementary School, who happened to know the Dennett's. And she was concerned about the situation around the flagpole and around the dedication slab to the Dennett's. Just wanted to pass along some ideas for how maybe we can rehab the area. And maybe we can make this one of our priorities for the grounds during the course of this year. Maybe reach out to some town folk who have some landscaping expertise, so we can get that back up to snuff and give the respect and honor to the Dennett's for all they've done for the town of Plington. So, Peter, I'll pass this along to you at the end of the meeting, so we can look at it and have a discussion about it.
Absolutely.
I also did receive some correspondence from a local family that has started a business recently, asking for the ability to potentially put flyers into the backpack mail. But because of our school policies here, it's a for-profit organization. So, we can't do that. But I wish the Peters the best with their new business and the opportunities it does present to students of Plington. So, unfortunately, we can't break our own policies. We could always look at policies, which takes a while, and see if we want to change the language. But as it stands, we can't put anything out for for-profit organizations as a school committee. All right, moving on to new business. So, town meeting?
Sure. So, the Silver Lake Regional School District has presented a warrant article for the Plington Town Meeting this fall. In particular, it asked the town to approve the incorporation of our pre-K program, our Silver Lake Pre-K program, into the Silver Lake Regional School District, which is how we have been operating for many years. In addition, the regional agreement had a number of items, legal regulations that needed to be updated because it had been a while since the regional agreement had been revised and updated to meet state regulations. So, that's the big item that we're presenting from Silver Lake in the town meeting.
So, town meeting is October 18th. And I'd appreciate it if you could go and help support the regional agreement going forward. If we don't pass the new regional agreement, we're going to be in a heap of trouble here at the local level because our pre-K program will cease to exist as an incorporated program. And we're going to have to try and come up with a way to do it in-house ourselves and to pay for it as well. So, this change does have a dollar value added to it. It's going to cost Plington about $40,000 more a year. But that has less to do with the change and more to do with the fact that when Dr. Prue and Dr. Panerisi... Hey, Dr. Panerisi, how are you? This is our new Director of Special Ed, in case you haven't met her yet. When we were asking them to look at the program, we asked them to make sure that it was self-sustainable, to build in an administrator, so this program will now have its own principle, to run the program in enough staff, that if anybody's out this day or that day, we'll be able to meet the IEPs of these students who are there and keep the program robust going. So, that's why you see that there's potentially a dollar change there, and it's an increase overall. But other than that, as Jill said, it's really getting up to date with some of the language from MGLs and CMR, and also readjusting the voting power of the three towns based on the most recent census. So, when I brought it to the Board of Selectmen, they were most interested in, with this new agreement, what happens if one of the towns pulls out? What's the protection for the other two towns to stay in? And the protections are very, very strong. No one can unilaterally pull out of the regional agreement. It has to be accepted by all three towns. And it doesn't mean that it's going to happen the next July 1st after a town meeting. You can agree to how many years you want to kind of wind out of it. And being part of the regional school committee, I can tell you that no one's really talking about going that direction. If anything, some people are talking about going fully regionalized. So, not really a concern that I have at this point, as anybody leaving. So, again, October 18th, town meeting. If you could make it to help us pass that article, that would be great. Thank you, Jill. So, on to some unfinished business. We're keeping the Dennett fields used by dogs. I know soccer season has started up. And I assume that the issue remains?
Honestly, the fields have been closed.
The fields have been closed because we're rehabbing them?
Yeah.
So, where have we been playing in our games?
No games yet.
No games, practice?
Practice, Harry Jason.
And how are the conditions of those fields for our kids? Fair? Okay.
There's still dogs here because they have a couple of practices for the younger kids. And there's still dogs out there every time I'm here.
Okay, all right. So, we'll continue to go back to select with that and see what the next steps are. Playground safety, accessibility, modernization. Christine, I'm going to give this one to you.
We believe the playground is complete. We got a chance to take a peek out there. It looks lovely. It was a long, long process, but the hurt at the end came so fast. Took four days for it to be finished. It's really pretty impressive. Because of the rain, we've been asked to maybe give it a couple more days to cure. It should only take 48 hours to cure with the vass. The rain may have delayed that process. So, the vass is, if possible, wait till Wednesday and just confirm. But it was done Friday afternoon.
And I'd just like to publicly thank Peter for all his legwork that he did at the beginning in the dreaming phase of the playground. We met with a lot of different consultants. We came up with a lot of different designs. We heard from a lot of parents who wanted redesigns. We went back to the chalkboard, redesigned things, until we could best meet the needs of what the playground was designed for. And it was a three-fold operation. We were trying to make it developmentally appropriate for a K-6 building, recognizing that a lot of our kids don't have the upper body strength to utilize some of the old equipment that was there. We were looking for safety. There was no fill below any of our structures in the old playground. We now have the highest standard in impact safety for the playground. And the one that was nearest and dearest to my heart was accessibility for all students. Regardless of who shows up at the doorstep of this school, now they'll be able to play with their friends on our playground, which was a major, major goal of making this an ADA-plus playground for the students of Plington and any of their friends who want to come visit them on the weekend. So, it's open to all, hopefully soon. And y'all have been invited to come to a quick ribbon cutting right before Harvest Fair at 10:45 on Saturday. Just get some pictures taken, throw it in the paper, and celebrate the wonderful accomplishment. I'd also like to thank Christine Healy, who ended up becoming an expert in playgrounds. You were basically my OPM for quite a while here.
I learned a lot.
And you also kept the figures straight, which was difficult because we had a lot of funding sources for this. And the primary funding source for the playground was not the operating budget of the Dennett. We try and devote as much of the money towards the teachers and their classrooms of this building. This was paid for because Brian Wick, when he was the Chair two chairs ago, said, "Any monies we get from school choice, we should set aside for one-time projects." We use some of that money on the water filtration system here, but we put a lot of it away for this. Kathy Lenatry got us an earmark in the budget a couple of years ago for the rubberized surface. And the Community Preservation Committee also gave us $94,000 towards this project. So, it was a lot of people working together. And Christine kept it all straight, kept us on budget. And pretty soon, we're going to be able to go on those swings together, Christine.
Pretty soon, it'll come off the agenda.
That's right. I'd be happy to take it off the agenda. Speaking of taking things off the agenda, the solar project. So, we've signed all the agreements necessary, power purchase agreement, the lease agreement. They are hooked to the grid, and they're up and running at this point. Do any of you have any additional information about the solar panels at this point?
Just the piece that I am aware of is that we're not sure yet of the financial impact because the way, the structure of how this operated... Our old meter was removed and a new meter came in to work with this. And that was in June. And we received a letter August 17th telling us that we'd be getting a new structure of bills charging us for electricity but denying it against the generation. So, we have no idea what that looks like yet. So, everything you'll see in our financial is based on what last year was. So, hopefully that will just become a better situation.
Any questions about the solar project? So, I think we could safely take that off the agenda at this point. If you're willing to just add any information you get to your reports, that'd be great. So, we'll go on to standing committees. Admin review does not have a meeting scheduled yet, but the Superintendent and I will work to get one of those dates together for you all. Any negotiations soon? No negotiation news. Union 31, do we have a joint meeting scheduled for any time soon, Jill?
We will have a joint meeting scheduled soon. We were waiting to get a little bit further in the process with the Business Director. Because it's a shared cost position, we're going to need to have a joint meeting. So, we wanted to see where we were in that process before we sent out ideas for our next date. But it will be before the end of September.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. Pat?
First meeting's the 5th of October.
Okay. Capital improvement and capital request. I just know that eventually, when it makes sense to schedules, the Town Properties Committee of Plington would like to meet the new Director of Facilities. But that could be November, December, just eventually, so they can let him know some of their priorities and hear what some of our priorities may be for the building here. Legislative agent, we got the free school meals for all. There's a decent amount of funding for education in this year's state budget. Big year for us was two years ago, though, where we really saw a lot in Chapter 7. I believe we saw $134,000 more. This year, it was more like $72,000 more from the state. The one thing I would ask you to look at is the mass rural schools right now are making a major push for additional funding. And we actually do benefit from that legislation. This year, we saw a tripling of rural aid. And last year, Silver Lake, but it's mostly Plington, got around $71,000 in rural aid. So, we should expect to see close to triple of that this year. But a bill right now would call for that to be multiplied by four more. So, it could be quite substantial. An email has been circulating around. I know Kate has already signed on to it. It's on a website called ruralschoolsma.org. And it's asking for individual school committee members to sign on to the letter. There's a lot of information if you're not comfortable signing on to it without reading the actual bill and reading how it can help. But the Plington School Committee was actually one of the original members of the Rural Schools Collaborative. There was a Superintendent out in Western Mass who started a group to analyze the needs of rural schools. And when Joy Blackwood was the Superintendent, we did sign on to that. We paid really small dues. And a couple of years later, we saw all of the work we did as a group make its way to Beacon Hill and go vote it. And that's where we've been getting some of those dollars from every single year, was the work that group did. And that work's continuing on. It might become pretty significant over the next couple of years. So, I'd ask you to please just look at it and consider it. I'd also like to invite any of you who'd like to come down to the Cape, even for a day, for the joint conference. The Superintendent's and School Committee Conference is down in the Cape. If you've never been before, I'd love you to come down and just check it out. You know, usually there's a fee associated. We do have some money in our budget for it. But if you're just going to come down for a day, we could just bypass that. It could get you tickets to the meals and things like that. So, be looking for the bulletin coming out from MASCE. See if there's any speakers or any topics you're interested in seeing, and let me know. If you want to come in a more official capacity, we do have the MASCE Delegate Assembly. I think it's Wednesday, the 8th of November. If any of you are interested in being the delegate and voting on some resolutions that will become planks in the platform of what we push for, more than willing to nominate you right here. If there's no one interested in doing it, I'll fall on the sword and I'll be the delegate for you. But I've done it a lot of times. If anybody wants the experience, let me know. If you want to come down, just have lunch and relax and go to a couple sessions, just reach out to me, and I'll make sure it happens for you. Okay? Any questions, Rob? Do you want to be the delegate?
I mean, it sounds interesting. I don't know, I've done it before.
So, they're all resolutions that just deal with the state of education in Massachusetts and what we want to push for? There's a major resolution now about the repeal of MCAS. You may have been hearing that there's going to be a ballot question. The MTA is talking about it. The Superintendent's talking about it. The school committees are also talking about it.
Sure.
It would be Wednesday, I believe, 3:00 in the afternoon on Wednesday, the 8th of November. So, it's kind of tough juggling work and stuff to get there. But if you're interested in doing it, I'd love to nominate you.
Yeah, I'd be interested in doing that.
Okay. So, I'd like to nominate Rod Montgomery to be the Plington School Committee Delegate to the Delegate Assembly for MASCE and allow him the authority to vote his conscience on the resolutions that he sees there. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, awesome, Rob. Thank you so much. So, we'll have a letter put together and sent to MASCE declaring you as our delegate for the assembly. And I look forward to seeing you down there. Awesome. If you have any questions, just reach out, and I'll get you the details. All right, fantastic. Hey, Kate, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. Single signature warrants.
On August 28th, nine warrants totaling $179,297.84 were electronically sent to the Superintendent, Jason Frazier, as a single signature person for signature. All warrants were signed, and then they were brought to the Plington Town Hall for payment processing. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Dennett Help and Safety Advisory Committee, I think we can remove that from our agenda moving forward as well. So, on to administration. Do we have a CASA update from anybody? We have the Harvest Fair coming up this Saturday. I believe it's from 11:00 to 2:00 in the afternoon, right here at the Dennett. Just prior to that, Kate, if you have the time to make it, appreciate you considering coming to a ribbon cutting ceremony toward the playground.
I saw that today. Unfortunately, we're out of town this week. Hopefully, the weather's going to be alright.
Hopefully, it is. And then we'll just mosey over to the Harvest Fair and have some good time, eating some cotton candy and playing some games. Maybe the canines will be here from Plumb County and the police departments. It's always a good time. Principals report. Peter?
Thank you. To start out the year, our enrollment is 251 students. It's great to have the kids back in the building. This is a school, it's supposed to be filled with children. Students and staff have really embraced our PBIS initiative, Dennett Rocks. Students have been earning tickets for demonstrating expected behaviors in class, at recess, on the bus, pretty much everywhere at school. Some classes have already emptied their classroom bucket into the school-wide bucket out front. Jason, you already mentioned that the playground rubber flooring system has been installed, ready to be played on, hopefully, Wednesday of this week. As part of that project, we received a donation of a new friendship bench and a giant Adirondack chair for the new playground. I would ask the committee to consider accepting those donations.
Absolutely. However, is it anonymous, or do we know who donated?
CASA.
CASA did?
Yes.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to accept the donation of those two pieces for our playground. Do I have a second? Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? With our thanks, of course.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Also, I received a check from an anonymous donor in the amount of $10,000. I would ask the committee to consider accepting that donation.
Do you personally know who that was?
I do.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to accept the donation for $10,000 and to instruct Peter to say thank you on our behalf. Do I have a second? All right, all those in favor?
Great, thank you. This is all good news tonight.
Was the donation earmarked for anything? Or is it just to the school, to the playground?
Whatever I felt the children needed.
The children? Got it.
Yes. Moving on to staff update. We do have some new faces in the hallways here. We have Melissa Glitter is now teaching Grade 1. Kirsten Myers is our new math interventionist. Anna George is our new paraprofessional. I'm still working to fill out the building subposition and the point for our teacher, doing a lot of interviewing this month. And also, we have Officer Matt Turenzi working as our school resource officer. The fire department was kind enough to give him a nice fire engine backpack for his first day of school. There's a picture on Facebook. I think that is it.
Okay. One question for you, Peter. 251, is that our recent all-time high?
Yes.
Okay. So, we anticipate our October 1 will be in the ballpark at 251?
Give or take, three to four students.
Okay.
We'll be in the ballpark.
All right. And Christine, I noticed some of the signs that you have. Hallway sign, one out at the playground, one in a learning area. Could you just explain to the committee and anybody in that audience, what are you using that ROC acronym for and how do you use it differently in different spaces?
We did a lot of work over the summer. We had quite a few staff members come in and do three days of curriculum work with Christine Downs from the NAES Center. And the first thing that we did was actually set up our Dennett Rocks Matrix, which talked about what respect, ownership, community kindness, and safety looks like in all of our school settings, from classrooms, specialists, to dismissal, bus, playground. And then what we actually created was eight different lessons, I believe. We actually walked the kids through the lessons of exactly what the expected behaviors look like in every setting. And we used a whole day to do that. We did the lower grades for one half of the day, the older grades for the other half of the day, actually walked them through the lessons. So, they weren't just hearing what was expected. We were discussing it, we were modeling it for them, we were practicing it with them. The signage that you see was actually designed by Rachel McGuire. She is our teacher at the high school. So, there's an example right up there. So, this is the one for our learning areas. And you'll notice it's kind of small. We also talked about the noise level in each area as well. So, that's changed on all the different signs. So, the signs have been modified for the different areas.
Should understand.
Oh, that's what I'm sorry. For, you know, the playground has one, the cafeteria has a large banner. What's been really neat is to see the true buy-in, not just from our staff, but from all of our kids, from kindergarten all the way through grade six. And I was a little worried about our older kids, but they're right in it to earn the tickets, and they're so proud to tell me what they got them for, just like the little ones are. We actually have, 100% of our classrooms have now filled their bucket for the first time. So, what happens is when they fill their classroom bowl with the tickets that the kids earned, then they earn a class reward, you know, which they figure out together with their teachers. And then their tickets get transferred into a big Dennett Rock, which my friend Mrs. Hanson helped us to create out in our front lobby. And the kids are so excited about it. And they're coming in, and they're talking about it. And they're looking to see, well, how much farther do we have to get before we get the whole school reward? So, it's been really exciting. There's still a lot of work to do. We've been working over the last week or so to try to get some consistency around our behavior referrals, what that process looks like, the think sheets. We've recreated those, standardized those for the younger kids versus what it looks like for the older kids. We still have a lot to do, but we're so proud of what we've accomplished so far. So, we do have a working group of, there's ten at-large community members, plus Christine Downs, our consultant, me, and our two leaders from the teaching staff. It's Anne Walker, who teaches Grade 4, and Andrea Slowey, who teaches Grade 1. They've sort of taken on that leadership sphere, which is... And we'll continue to work with Christine Downs throughout the school year as we're kind of fine-tuning and sort of gathering everything that we need to make a complete PBIS manual, hopefully, by the end of the year. But we're excited.
It's exciting to hear about the kids being engaged and buying into it. But as you progress through this, please keep us up to date with the success, but also some of the pitfalls that you might encounter and how we can help ensure that this continues to progress in a positive way.
Definitely will. And I do want to say thank you too because we couldn't have done everything that we've accomplished without the allocation of the SIR funds that you guys voted on for us last year. The money went kind of quick. When you look at the consulting fees, plus, I mean, all the beautiful signage that we got, it's, you know, it's built to last. So, I feel like we made a huge investment in Dennett Rocks. I've had actually a lot of kids in lunch groups over the past week or so say, "So, is this just for this year, or are we going to keep doing this?" I'm like, "Oh, no, this is what we're doing." You know, and it's been neat to be able to talk to them. It's not just about when the teachers are giving you tickets. It's about, you know, behaving in a way that follows Dennett Rocks, even when you're not with us, you know, even when you're out in the community, or you're on the soccer field, or, you know, you're at dance or something like that. So, it's been, it's been really, really exciting.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions for Christine or Peter? Okay. Christine, here we go.
A lot of Christines on this side of the street.
Christine, over here, yeah.
In your electronic package tonight, you'll see there's a financial there. And one thing I wanted to talk about, because we do have a newer member, is that the way the financial is organized is based on how the town votes their budget. So, if you look at the summary sheet, that's the top sheet, there's a local operating budget line voted by the town, then a special education line, and then vocational education line. Those are the three lines that we discussed in the budget season and that the town actually votes on. And that's how we maintain those records, and that's how the town does as well. If you go to the pages that follow, there are four pages of detail. That's really an expansion of each one of those categories. Went to teaching, it's, you have the teaching staff, the paraprofessional staff, supplies, contracted services. So, it's really an expansion of what's on the cover sheet. And then I wanted to mention that for the financial that you would see tonight in your electronic package, we're at the beginning of the year, we're trying to encumber as much as we can right now. You're going to see there's a deficit in special education transportation for $105,000. I wanted to bring that to your attention because this is before we have any insight into where our circuit breaker is going to be. We have not seen our circuit breaker funds yet. And there are circuit breaker funds available for special education transportation. We don't know what the impact of that is going to be yet. So, I wanted to, you know, this is just the first run, what it looks like with the students that are currently being transported and what those transportation services will entail. Other than that, there's only a small other deficit that will be absorbed in the category. What I also wanted to mention is that, so with this circuit breaker, it's not included for tuition or transportation. So, we don't know the full impact of that yet. And out of just your vocational, last year, we didn't have anybody attend. We have one student attending this year. So, the budget that we have will be sufficient to cover that. I think we left enough of the budget to cover approximately two students. So, there will be some funds available there. And just keep in mind, this is a snapshot of where we are right now today. And anything, things could change. But we try to quantify and encumber anything that we can once we become aware of it. So, that is our goal. So that is our goal. And as of today, this is what the financial looks like.
Any questions, Christine? I'd like to entertain a motion to accept Christine's report as presented. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? All right. Moving on. Ryan?
I would ask the chair if he would allow us to present jointly, since so much of my report also deals with curriculum instruction and assessment.
Absolutely.
Okay. So we started off, over the summer, we held three days for our Leadership Institute. And at that time, we reviewed the strategy for district improvement. We talked about what was accomplished, what still needs to be done, and any changes that we want to make for the upcoming year to help focus our goals in our schools, for our principals, but also so that staff is also aware and can align their goals for people who are starting new plans. This summer was also busy with a lot of hiring. We introduced our new Director of Student Services, Dr. Christine Panerisi, and our new Assistant Director of Student Services, Ms. Amy Cedarholm. And we are right now in the process of negotiating with a potential candidate for the Director of Business. Christine Healy will be retiring at the end of December this year. So we're very sad that she'll be retiring, but we're very grateful that we've had her to help us through some very difficult times. And she's always a voice of calm and reason and a real problem solver. So we're very sad to see Christine retire, but she is well-deserving and we're happy for her. In terms of our presentation on opening day, we got to hear from students from across the district. We get to hear from some singers from one of our elementary schools. And in that opening day, we focused on what we accomplished last year and what we're going to be focusing on for the upcoming year, as it's an opportunity for us to get together as a district and frame our goals for the school year. In your packet, you'll find a presentation with slides from opening day. In terms of our first, our first goal, which focuses on building relationships and communicating effectively, we continued to monitor the social emotional needs of our students through the analysis of data. We had two data points last year. Teachers worked in groups to examine their student data and then to implement interventions in the classroom. Second step was implemented at the middle school. And high school students participated in the Anti-Defamation League training. We designed a new website, which we hope to launch by December of this year, and will give our website greater accessibility and consistency throughout the district. In terms of emphasizing high expectations for all students, we have asked to make sure that our inclusion ratios are being met to provide a least restrictive environment for our special education students. We provided professional development, inclusive learning opportunities last year for our teaching staff. And we used our learning walks to learn more about the progress with effective inclusive practices and provided feedback. We also began to create data walls so that we can examine the data that we have currently in our schools, whether they be STAR data, DIBELS data. We've also looked at MCAS data and looking at what may or may not be working and figuring out where the greatest growth is occurring and what are the practices that are most effective to help all students learn and grow. We also examined support team practices across all the schools. And this year, it will be a big focus of ours to develop greater consistency and effective practices in all of our schools to make sure that all students are receiving interventions, regardless of whether or not they are special education students or not, or on a 504, if a student is experiencing difficulty or struggles, as many students do, that goes through the support team process and the support team works with staff to help identify ways that this child can be supported in the classroom and beyond. In terms of creating and implementing our aligned and engaging curriculum, we again provided opportunities throughout the school year, but a lot of work happened in the summer months, where teaching teams got together to create backwards design approach lessons. And also, the big focus for the elementary schools and at Denin Elementary School last year was collaborative literacy, K through 5. There was a lot of embedded professional development with that and support with that. And teachers continue to look at the strengths and weaknesses and to supplement in areas because no one program has all of the answers. So the first year, we tried to do our best to implement it with fidelity so that we can figure out what's working and what's not working, and then work together with our teaching teams to make it a more robust program and to address the needs of the students who are actually in front of us. In addition, Melissa presented new elementary materials that were vetted and purchased by our elementary schools in the area of science. So there's more supplemental materials in the science classrooms as well this upcoming year. With regards to structures across the district, those things that help support the educational process, we did quite a bit last year. We created a technology plan, which we intend to implement the first year this year. All of our schools have instrumental lessons now with the addition of instrumental lessons at Halifax Elementary School. And we believe that'll be a benefit to Denin Elementary School because we've had a difficult time finding part-time instrumental and music teachers. And now this person works both here at Denin Elementary School and Halifax in a full-time position. So we think it will bring also greater stability to Denin Elementary School, in addition to helping support our programs at the Silver Lake level. We'll continue to communicate our needs through capital and budget planning. We also revised the evaluation process. Assistant Superintendent Lynch was the chair of that committee and worked with representatives and principals, assistant principals and staff throughout the district to improve our evaluation process and to create clear language. And that group, that working group, will continue to meet this year to see how those changes are working and possibly even present additional ideas for the future. The daily sub-rate in all districts has been increased, which we hope will allow us to get more subs this year. The Silver Lake Pre-K restructure we talked about earlier in the meeting today, that is a DESI requirement that we restructure our program and to acknowledge Pre-K as a Silver Lake program, if in fact that's the will of the towns to make it part of the regional You'll also notice that there'll be some changes to shared cost agreements as part of that elementary restructuring, because we have other elementary programs that are Silver Lake, and so they may become part of a school as opposed to being considered Silver Lake, because you can't take a, you can't take a program and make it part of Silver Lake. You could take a whole grade level, but you can't just take programs and make them part of Silver Lake, if that makes sense.
According to DESI.
According to DESI. The second half of the presentation really talks about how we're going to move on with our efforts and establish new ones. But we're going to, in terms of elementary, we're going to continue to do the October and February surveys for student well-being and develop interventions where needed. We're going to continue our efforts to, that promote student well-being and pro-social skills such as PBIS, which you've heard about from our principal and assistant.
Coordinator of Student Services.
Thank you.
I think I made that up, so.
We are going to work on reducing achievement gaps by continuing to monitor the data. And our building principals will be working this September to present to our other elementary teams, as well as in our, in our school committee meeting, they're going to be presenting their MCAS data for the committee and reflecting on areas of growth and areas that we still need to focus on. We are launching a district-wide masked tiered system of support to lead the building level support teams. And we're going to continue to use learning tours. Each of our schools has been asked to select instructional, one to two instructional practices to focus on for the learning tours. And that instructional practice should be born out of the data that they're looking at, whether it be through STAR data, MCAS data, or other data that they need to address in an instructional way. We're going to continue our work with UBD. We're going to make the required changes to our Silver Lake elementary programs, Pre-K through 6. That has to be done by the end of this year. So stay tuned. I anticipate a bit more updates along the way as we work our way through these changes. And next is Ryan.
Thank you. Time out, Walter. Did any of you guys have any questions or comments about what she's gone through so far?
I had a couple of parents reach out in an email. So the surveys that go out to kids, are they going to be vetted like before, where they're sent to parents to review, and then they've got the ability to opt out?
That's a good question for Ryan.
Sure. I think you would look, the plan is to have it look very similar to last year, which is communicating with parents about the rationale, sending exact copies of the questions used so they could be reviewed, and then explaining how we use the data. So it's our plan to have it look very much like we did last year. Just the only change is the timing of the administration. Teachers felt like it would be helpful to have two data points and then to use it a little earlier than last year. But yes, parents would have, parents would have copies of all the questions and could have plenty of time to opt their student out and also be reminded of the deadline for opt-out, which is, you know, busy parents.
Right. And we added that language into our policy last year.
Yes. So I just wanted to make sure it was going to kind of mirror how it was last.
Yep.
Good question. Good answer, Ryan. Thank you. Any other questions before Ryan jumps into his new information? Ryan?
Thank you. I just wanted to provide a little bit more information and to thank the work that was done over the summer, especially from the Denin staff. Pete and Christine both helped to pull together 11 Denin teachers for July 10th, 11th, and 12th to focus on interventions here at Denin. So teachers spent three days talking about how best to meet the needs of students and planning out the specific times that would be used to support students and then potentially the most effective co-teaching and intervention support. So I just want to reach out or celebrate the summer work that was done by teachers and administration to get that in place for the school year, and that was done over the summer. So I just wanted to recognize that. As well as the science curriculum units that were done by Megan Medlin, Ann Walker, and Elizabeth Goodman to do some curriculum work over the summer to contribute to the district curriculum efforts. And just once again, to say thank you for the PBIS work that was done by 10 staff members in the group to get things going for this year. So that was a lot of the, a lot of work is done over the summer to get ready for the school year. So I just want to recognize and celebrate that. That's, that's all I have for the last part of the update.
Awesome. Any questions for Ryan? All right. Well, we're on to just some dates to remember. We have an early release date on September 28th, and that means kids will be getting out of this school at 12:30. And we'll be serving breakfast and lunch that day. Columbus Day, celebrated October 9th, no school. We also have an early release on October 26th. Again, released at 12:30 in the afternoon after lunch is served. Parent conferences are that date. And we have our next school committee meeting on November 6th. But just so everyone is aware, the teachers have an in-service day on November 7th, which is a Tuesday. All right. Thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you all for being here as well. Appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second? All right. All those in favor? Thank you very much.